Hello everyone! Yeah, Mandru, of course, come here, come here, baby, come here! Hello, how are you guys? Hi Arusha, hi Pekan Sissi and hi Arthur, welcome in! I'm trapped, so I have to do the things I have to do, you know? I'm forcing myself to do the things I don't wanna do. But yeah, she's alive! I am, Mandru as well, Mandru's right here. So, happy new year everyone! I hope you had a nice time. As you can hear, my English got worse over the holidays. I'm in the jar, no, don't put mayo on me, please don't! Mandru, you get a lot of smooches, yeah? Where do you guys wanna... Let's see what the next spirit is, so we can go to that place. Hirshe has been showing up in every game I play. So we have to go to the desk and play some games. That's what we gotta do! We have to go to Hammer, don't bonk me, don't bonk me! But yeah, how you doing? I was planning on doing some chatting first before I dive into studying. So, yeah. Oh my gosh, where should I even begin? It was a nice break, I missed you guys, I missed you guys very much. So, yeah. Hope you're all doing good, let me get some more tea. Perfect. Um, oh, and also, I need... Okay, you guys can hear that, I have to make it a little bit more... Oh, you can still hear it. Hmm... Is the music alright, by the way, the background music, is it too loud, is it too quiet, I don't know? So, yeah. Um, let's go back to the game. Music good, good. Ah, now my mug is hot. Okay guys, um, we gonna... I saw it on Nessas' stream, okay? She did it, and I was like, "Oh my gosh, I wanna do that too." Um, she made press-on nails on stream, so I was thinking, maybe we can do that too in the future. I got a lot of materials, because my sister and I wanna get rid of our gel nails, and wanna have press-on nails, because it's a lot healthier for your nails. So, um, we got a lot of materials, maybe we gonna stream some? Not sure yet, depends on if my sister wanna participate. So, maybe, no promises. Baby Tiger will be also on stream. Oh, I need to get a design for her! That would be so cool! Um, also, Panda was here for a few days, we celebrated the new year together. It was really nice, we lit up some sparklers when it hit the new year. I don't know what traditions you have in your country, but usually it's fireworks over here, but I don't like fireworks, they're stupid, they're expensive. Hi Taro, how are you doing, welcome in! Uh, so we didn't get fireworks, we got some sparklers, it was cute. We went on my balcony and lit the sparklers. Um, so I'm forced to do the things I don't wanna do, that's why I'm in the jar. Um, what else? So, yeah, she was... She had to work, so she brought her work laptop while I was playing Nikki. Don't break, no, don't break the jar, I need it, so I... I'm forced to do the things I don't wanna do, but I have to do it! I have to, I don't wanna, but I have to! Oh, my furbit! Um, so yeah, the first few days I didn't stream, because I had Panda over. So I thought it would be... I don't know, I think it's kinda rude to stream when you have visitors. Um, the only exception was Pekan Sissi, because she was also streaming, and we had an off collab, so that does not count, it does not count. So, yeah. Um, you got Panda then? I mean... She's a friend of me for like a few years now, so she's already back home. She drove back home yesterday. Oh my gosh, the trains are a nightmare in Germany. If you're German, you know what I'm talking about. I wanted to visit a friend, like, she was in Berlin for a few days, she lives in the US. And the last time I met her was when she was still living in Japan, and I was in Japan. And then, um, she moved to the US because of her husband. And finally, she was in Germany, and she was kinda close by, it was still 3 hour by train. But I wanted to visit her in Berlin, we wanna go to the Christmas market together. But the trains did not drive, they got cancelled. They got cancelled. I hated that, so I could not visit her in Berlin, which was really sad. And then the day Panda came over, she was also coming by train. The fucking train, um, was over an hour late. And then the last few stops were just cancelled, and she had to get off like... Almost, like, almost the last stop, not the last, but almost the last. How are you doing, J? I'm doing good, I'm doing pretty good. I have to, I don't see the time, let me... Push it, push it, push it, push it. Too much, cable shit over here. Okay, I can finally see the time.
Gimme cookie.
Me cookie? Ah, sorry, no cookies left, all the cookies gone. All the cookies are gone. I'm very sorry, Taro. By the way, did you guys hear the text-to-speech? Because, oh, I feel like you could not hear it, I didn't hear it! I didn't hear, yes, you hear, okay, good, good, good. Because I didn't, I saw it in chat, and I was like, huh... Kinda missing the sound! Um, but yeah, um, where was I? So the trains got cancelled a lot, so, yeah.
Gimme Taro's cookie.
Gimme Taro's, there are no cookies! There are no cookies! Not a single one is left. I'm really sorry, guys. I'm really sorry, no cookies left. Prove it, I got the, what's it called, the tin? The cookie box, right next to me, it's empty. Who puts cookies in the fridge? In my fridge is pretty empty. I haven't gone shopping, that's one of my, as you can see, it's one of my goals, make a shopping list, because I have to go tomorrow. Which is why, okay guys, I wanted to talk to you about why I'm not streaming as much as I used to, so first it was the holidays, then I got a visitor, and now I, um... Let me check my calendar really quick. Alright, today is the 5th, right? Where's my pen? Is it this? It is, I have to put, what is it, I trace something? Oh, do you... Auntie already ate all her cookies. Right, you already ate all your cookies? Um... So tomorrow, there will probably be no stream. Because, and I hate that, um, I have to go to the lady doctor. Tomorrow is the 6th, right? 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11? Um, tomorrow will be off, because if I go to the doctor in the morning, I don't... I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything else later, yeah, the OB-GYN. I hate, I'm not happy with my doctor. But there is no other available doctor around here. Only, I called a lot of doctors before, like, before I settled on this one, and they were all like, "I'm sorry, we have so many patients, we cannot get another new one." And I was like, "Okay, sorry guys." And then I had to call a lot of the lady doctors around here. And she was the only one who accepted new patients, and I've been at that... I'm sorry, Taro, but no. I'm sorry, but no. Yes, the gynecologist, the lady doctor! I'm not, it's just a checkup, it's just a checkup. I'm not pregnant, believe me, I'm not pregnant, and I don't wanna be pregnant soon. I have other things to do first. Which would be, I getting a stable job, but it depends on what to do, yeah. So once a year, you have to go to the checkup, and I hate it! This lady, she's old, like, not old old, but she is part of an older generation, let's say it like this, she's part of an older generation. And every time I'm there, she's like, "Oh, so how about kids?" And I'm like, "Yeah, nah, uh-uh, I'm not done with university, I don't have a job, I don't even have a partner." How am I gonna get anything done in the direction of kids' own? But she always understands, like, I explained to her, "Not now, not now." And she's like, "Hmm, so you don't want kids?" "Not now, maybe in the future, but not now!" She doesn't understand the "not now." All she hears is, "I don't want children, ever." Let Pekan wait, no, I'm not gonna let Pekan Sissi do it, I'm sorry, but no. I'm sorry. No. She might be a boomer. But I'm not sure if she's old enough to be a boomer, she might be at the later part of the boomer generation. So, yeah, if sugar was pregnant, it would be... If I was pregnant, you guys would probably know first. Because I would be like, "Oh my gosh, guys, the pregnancy cravings are terrible." I would complain so much. You cannot imagine. Imagine she asked me, "You have chats?" Well, exactly, no, I'm not, no sugar for you guys, do you speak German? Of course I, of course I'm speaking German with her. Of course, do you think? Okay, so, first of all, don't forget to drink something. Okay, first of all, I live in a part of Germany where English is seen as, um, pretty difficult. Um, and then this boomer lady, she... She grew up in the part of Germany where you didn't have English lessons, you had Russian lessons. So, yeah. She probably gonna speak English, of course you're gonna speak German. Damn, two German women yelling. We're not yelling! Where did you get that from? We're not yelling! Well, yeah, that's why we won't have a stream tomorrow. And I'm not even sure if my appointment is tomorrow. That's the thing, I was like, "Yeah, I'm free from the 13th," I think, I told her, but when I checked my calendar, it said the 6th. So I was like, "Are we sure about that?" So I'm gonna go tomorrow, tomorrow, and if it's not my appointment, I just go grocery shopping. I'm gonna feel like an old lady, because only the old ladies are gonna... Oh, there's something a lot, why is it... Why is it so wrong? I don't understand it, I might have made a mistake in my calendar, because I'm sure it's in the wrong week. But who knows? Who knows? So, yeah. Um, that's enough about that, and on Tuesday, I won't stream, because I'm gonna go to my sister's place, and we're gonna get our nails taken off, we're gonna get rid of the gel nails. They're very long right now, it's insane. And they're so long, I have trouble typing on my phone. I have problem, like, it's really difficult for me to type on my phone, because it does not take the letters I'm pressing, because it's... Ah, it's just terrible, just terrible! Okay, but, um, I think that's... Also, I wanna, like, like I said, Tuesday will be off. There will be a lot more study streams probably, so, yeah. It's also gonna happen, and I'm trying to stream as much as possible from maybe Thursday on. But I'm not sure yet. So, the first, like, this week might be a little bit weird. Not a lot of streams, maybe, we don't know. But I think from next week on, we might be back to regular streaming, or will be food today, I don't know. I don't know, I don't have food at home anymore. I ate everything yesterday, I was hungry! So I have to improvise today. So, we're gonna go back next week, I hope, I don't have pizza at home. Um, we tried to go back to regular streaming next week, like, as much as possible again, like, 5 times a week, maybe 6, who knows? And, let's see, it's Sunday, how am I supposed to buy pizza? Ooh, deliveries, rest of the world, bud? I could order some, maybe, let's see, let's see. But first, I have to do all of that shit over here. Wait, did we get the new spirit? No, did not. But, yeah, so... I don't have any pizza! I don't have that! Okay, but, guys, but we are now, um, going to study. I was talking for a while. I was talking a lot right now. Uh, which I love, I love the just chatting, but I feel like I don't have enough to just chat about. So, yeah. I hope, I hope one day, I'm gonna be able to chat a lot. Probably now we will. Yeah, everybody, go do your thing, get your to-do list ready. Oh, by the way, like I said, I don't wanna stream for too long, so that's 20, that's 40... That's... 60, and then 15 minutes? 75! Let's see. Let's do 4 intervals. About to go to bed, actually, traditionally. Oh, you're already at day 32, that's awesome! That's so cool! You can, by the way, if you want, like, I'm not forcing anyone, you can post your progress in Discord, that's what the showroom is for. You can post all the cool stuff in there. You were drawing right now, okay, let me open Discord. Okay, show us, show us what you draw. Go, 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 go! I need more tea. Come on, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up! I wanted to, like, draw a challenge as well. I don't know when I will be doing, but I wanna do it, because I like drawing. But I'm really bad, so I have to improve. What's going on, Taro? Face reveal, never, never! Never, you won't see my face ever. Wait, showroom, yes, showroom! I'm not buyable. Not like that. Oh shit! That's insane, Arusha! Oh, that looks so cool! Oh, silver hair is pretty difficult, I heard it's really difficult. Something changed today, okay, thank you for the lucky, Taro. I heard silver hair is really difficult, so, that's amazing! And I think you can already see day 1 and week 1, the difference, it's already there, and then from week 1 to 1 month? Arusha, that's insane! That's awesome! Everybody go to the showroom and have a look, that's amazing! So when will you draw a model? I'm waiting to your, to your, yeah, let's go, let's go, let's go, keep us updated! Keep us updated, show us everything you want, like, that's what the showroom is for. Show us whatever random thing you want, and I love it. I've drawn my mod. Now, I mean, like, the, like, a model right now, like this, like, it's rigable, that's what I mean by... Oh, are you talking? Yeah, your goal for 1 year is to finish a rigable model. And I can see the progress, so I think it's, you can do it. I believe you can actually do it. Look what difference day 1 and month 1 is, that's insane! Go for it! Do it! You can do it, I believe in you. That's amazing! That's just amazing! But yeah, I'm gonna have to study. Don't you think it's more than real? I mean, I'm not talking about like, like, 1 layer, you know? A rigable model has a million layers, so with the style you have right now, I think you can already do it. Like, simple ones. You know? But yeah, I believe in you! I believe in you! You can do this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna drink something. Okay, so, I'm gonna turn off my microphone, I will be back in 15 minutes, okay? Hello, I'm back! And, Shrimpy, welcome in, how are you? Hope you're doing good! Tauro, try, try the watch time again, it should work now. Welcome in shrimp, how are you doing? Hope you're doing good! Let me, let me just read all of chat, I read it, but I already forgot again, everything. Also, you're using the Pomodoro method with me, yes! Go for it! Get your to-do list done! Oh wow! That's a lot! It's my... I don't know, I mean, you're, you're, you're very busy, now I wanna know. Does it? Count for me as well? You say I haven't streamed that much longer than you watched, like... A, an, a, 100 hours? That seems alright. I'm, I'm curious about Pegasus. I'm curious about her watch time, because she's been here from the beginning. You missed about half. Hmm, I wouldn't say half. Half would be... 100 and maybe 15. Oh, wait, wait. You missed a bit more than, no, but less than half. Yes, I'm very committed to myself. 9% says she's the one. Oh, I watch Nitsu too! She, she is not here every time, even though she's a mod. I might, I might start looking For a new mod, I know well, I, I'm not sure yet. But we will see. We will see. So far, she's doing a pretty good job, alone with you guys. By the way, guys, don't forget to drink something, it's important! So much like you were... Um, she's sleeping right now, she's not moving for the next few hours, I, I'm, I'm afraid. By the way, did we get our new spirit yet? Did we get it? We didn't! I want the new spirit! By the way, did you see, I finished the stream plan for this week? Isn't that awesome? It may have been the first mod, but she won't be no... She will always be number 1 mod. Forever and ever. Because she's, she's just Pegasus. Oh, we're getting tired, no, I cannot get tired, we still have... A lot of studying for us! So if you wanna come to my home to get your... No, just, just put it in the mail and send it over. Just, just do that, oh, I need, I have to add another task. Which I need to do first, because that's important. I'm gonna put it all the way at the top. I need to budget my money. Last month was pretty tight! Well, I, I... I went in the negatives last month. It was only 2 euros, but... It's a negatives. So I have to budget better. But, to be fair, it was Christmas. It was Christmas and it was pretty expensive. Which right is an address, house of the German tiger. Uh, house of Chocomanjo, the bestest tiger ever. That's how, that's my address. I was thinking about getting a P- uh, a PO box. But, for what? For what would I put, for what, I don't get any fan mail, so... Yeah. But yeah, so, um, I... A PO box, you know, post office box, where you can send letters and everything. Without doxing, you probably need to be paid to keep... Yes, exactly, but it's kinda cheap, it's like... 20 euros for the whole year, which is kinda alright. But I have to go now, because it's study time again. I hate that the breaks are only 5 minutes. I will see you in 15 minutes! Okay, I'm back, guys. I'm back, I saw, I saw things in chat, I have to, I have to read them first. Give me a moment, I saw things! Okay, that's... You were talking about the surprise gift. And not, it's not, it's not 50/50, um, on the weird things, is it? Let me check my wishlist. I don't remember what I put on there, there's a lot on there. By the way, the surprise gifts... You can't, you can't send them, but, I think I have to approve them first? I'm not sure, I don't remember, he's just giving... Is it the thing? A log? I know, why is it not censored? Why? Oh my gosh! Wait. Shrimp, how old are you? If you are over 18, you're not too young. Because anybody under 18 has to leave. Ah, guys. By the way, guys, I got 5 wishlist visitors for today, I can see how many times you clicked on the link, I can see that. The purring is so cozy, right? I like the purring as well. It gives off cozy vibes, especially since I have a cat, so... Uh, my expression changed, because I was, um... Listening to a voicemail from Pegasus. Which is, which is important, she's my mod. Didn't chat, yeah, chat did nothing wrong, that's true. You guys are here to have a good time, okay? I'm unhinged at times, I like it. Let me, oh wait, I wanted to check my wishlist. I think it's pretty tame. Where's my wishlist? Oh, it didn't load. I think it's pretty tame... I think I'm gonna get rid of this. Yeah. There's not that much sus stuff proven. I'm sorry. Wait till I get one, I'm gonna buy a... There's a fel-, wait, there's a felical object, where is it? Am I blind? I might be. I mean, I am, it's not, no secret, I'm blind. Thank you, thank you for the lucky, Toto. On gifters, oh, on gifters, yes, um, it's a past gift. "If you wanna do something good, you could, you could participate in the crowdfunding for the cat tree." "'Cause Manju's current cat tree is a little bit broken." "Just tiny bit." "Just tiny bit." Can I, and the thing is... I cannot even hide the things I got. I cannot even hide it. I don't know how. Well, it's not, not an option to hide it. Oh my gosh, no, no, no. Yeah. Um... Break time is over. Oh, by the way, I did the budgeting. I did the budgeting! Isn't that awesome? I have like... I have less than two hundred euros left for this month. But, 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 but that's the money I have left for groceries and stuff like this. Because my, my rent is already paid. Rent and everything else is already paid, that's why it's only two hundred left. Aw, but Shrimpy, you don't have to, okay? You don't, put yourself first before you put me. Or Manju. So yeah, guys, don't forget to hydrate, I'm gonna go back to studying. I'm back, guys. I am back. What did I miss? What did I miss? Um, don't worry about my, my budget author, it's, it's alright. I can make that stretch for the whole month, don't worry. It's only for food and if I wanna shop on Amazon. Oh, also my bus ticket. Yeah, I, I need it for my bus ticket. But don't worry, it will, it will work. It always works. I can handle caffeine, good! Good, thanks, Shrimpy. I can handle caffeine as well. It's pretty easy. It makes me tired, to be honest. Makes me tired. And hi, emo CP! How are you? Hope you're doing good! Hope you had a nice day and a nice holiday season. I'm back, welcome back, Tauru! What, what, which one, which one are you... Which one are you watching? It's alright, it's alright, don't worry, guys. Believe me, I can... If nothing bad happens, like an unexpected vet visit, so Manju, please be nice and don't hurt yourself. Um, or I break something that I need to repair, everything else should be fine. Estética of the Rock here. I'm gonna Google that one. I'm gonna Google that one. 'Cause you know, I am? I need to know everything. I need to know everything. Oh, I saw that one! I, I, I know that. I didn't watch it. But I saw it on TikTok. I saw it on TikTok, so, yeah. I remember the main character, I saw him. And the pink-haired girlie. The others, I don't know. I already... I already tried! I already tried, but I ended it because like... It was not worth it. I was posting a picture every day, so you need to take enough pictures, but you have to make sure they are no doubles and you have to make sure they are all kinda different, so people wanna pay for it. I, I got forty bucks in two months, or something. That's not, that's not, or one month? That's not enough! Not enough. People say on this. I don't like feet, to be honest. I'm not a big fan of them. I don't, I don't, I don't really like them. I don't really like them. But if people buy it, why should I stop them? Okay, and on a different Twitch place, I was called Fiddler. In your past or your second Twitch account? Because I got one too. I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you my, my other Twitch account. But... I got a second one as well. I cannot give you your, your feed, my, no, I cannot give you my... I cannot give you my feed. Is that, is that good English? Probably not. Not stream... Oh! How many streamers are you watching, ah? I got like, I don't know, I'm probably following at least a hundred. I can't give you my feed. Yeah, that's the correct English, yes, exactly. I'm following so many people, that's insane. In total, in total. I follow at least a hundred people in total. I'm not at once, that would be insane. 459, ooh, that's a lot! That's a lot! But yeah, I feel that. There are so many good streamers out there, right? It's... I watched seven of them. I can't, I don't have the attention span for that much. But I try, I'm always in Chio's chat. Even if I'm not chatting, I'm there. And I'm also always in Nessa's chat. More lurking than chatting, but yeah. But yeah! It's study time, I will see you in fifteen minutes! Okay guys, that was the last... That was the last study thingy. Study session. I am not done. I'm pretty far from being done, but now let's check. We got the new spirit! We got the new spirit! Wait a second. What is your new role? You said, you said, where was it? And Chio is a friend. She's a friend. Uh, as of the first of this year, I got a new role. What role did you get? I'm curious. I thought you were the mod. And you were that before already. Did you get another new role? Creepypants. Yeah, we are playing games on the, like, right here, because I want to get the new spirit. And you have to do, like, to do things. Oh, you're a manager! Oh my gosh, that's awesome! Oh my gosh! That's so cool! I don't have manager. Oh look! Oh, it's so cute! I wanna see... Oh, so cute, it's so cute, it's so cute! Apebit is an adventurous and energetic spirit with mysterious origins. Oh, it's so cute, that's too much text. That's so cute! That's adorable! Let's see what it looks like in different colors. Got the red, we got the gray, we... Oh, look, it also got the colors, like, oh, it's so cute! That game is called Spirit City Lo-Fi Session. Yes, that's a lot of responsibility you got shrimp. It's just a background. No, it's not a background, it's a game! Where you can, with the studying, you get your spirit decks and everything, like, you collect, um, XP, and then you can unlock all of this, and you have to do different activities to unlock the different little spirits. It's so cute. It's adorable. I was a fucking ass. We noticed! Well, I noticed, Chio is very successful at the moment. And I hope she keeps on being successful. That's cute! I like the gingerbread one. It's adorable, but I wanna go with the gray one. So cute! So cute! I love that! Playing games! When I'm gaming, it's gaming too, that's so cute! It's not a study game, it's a game for you to have, like, you do your to-do list, you can track your habits. And how do I get rid of that again? You can even journal in here. It's so cool, also you can, you can, let's... You can sit at the window. Look, it's sleeping! Oh, it's adorable! I love this! Oh, I love it, it's so cute, we can go to the fireplace. It's also sipping on a coo- oh, it's so cute! I think we're gonna stay over here. I'm playing something huge. I'm playing something huge. I think I know... Wait, are you... She showed me something! She showed me something. Are you talking about that? Monkey doing monkey gaming. Yes, monkey doing monkey gaming! I have extreme... I'm not a big fan of monkeys, to be honest. I'm not a big fan. Was chased by one of the cha- oh, shit! That can't happen over here, we don't have monkeys running around! She only found out an hour ago what it was. Please, please, Lu, tell me! I'm way too curious to not know. I need to know! Let me know as well! Way too curious. I'm good at keeping secrets, but I'm not good with people keeping secrets from me. Isn't there an NDA? I don't know. I'm gonna ask the very important... Oh my gosh, that's amazing! Holy... Wow! I cannot pay, but, Shrimp, do you mind being my manager? I'm sorry! What do you mean, no cursing? This is an 18+ stream! Cursing is allowed. That is... That's... That's fucking big! That is amazing! I can fucking curse as much as I want, okay? This is my stream. I curse as... I can curse so much! You should, you should hear me when I drive a car, okay? Okay? It's pretty tame what's happening here. Everything's... It will be! German is unknown to... What do you mean? I mean, we're not swearing that much. I used my first swear word when I was like, 2 years old. Oh, what is it in English? Uh, let me think. Oh shit, I don't think there is an equivalent in English. Like, I could barely speak, but I was cursing. Believe me, I was, I was cursing. I don't know where my first beer was, but I was allowed to try when my grandma had her little... Um, shot glass of something. I don't know what it was, but it was some kind of schnapps. Or, it was not vodka, maybe, I think it was schnapps. I was pretty small. Yeah, Shrimp, I'm gonna, I'm gonna... We're gonna, we're gonna write after stream, okay? Tell it in German, it can be translated. I don't think you can translate that. And I'm not gonna say that on stream, it might get me cancelled. I don't wanna, I wanna, I don't, I'm only using the standard curse words on, on stream. I was 8 years old and driving with my grandma, and I said to the slow driver, "Sorry, fuck." Yes! It's, it's like... The second you, when... One of my friends likes really, she loves to, to, um... Do voice messages while she's driving, because she does not like driving alone, and it's a good time to just talk. And then, and she's like, blah 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 blah, blah blah blah, and then she's full on screaming, "Can't you use your fucking blinker?" It's, it's, it's kinda funny. Like, she's just talking really normal, talking about daily stuff, talking about work, and, "Can't you use your fucking blinker? Maybe look before you drive. Who gave you your fucking driver's license?" It's, it's... It's fun! Dream makes people insane. It does, it does, but it's also fun. It's also very, very fun. You're not, you're not you when you're dri- exactly. Exactly, you're not you when you're driving. Okay, now I have to check. By the way, I was ordering last year. I mean, it's not that long ago, but it was last year. Road Rage. Road Rage is... Do you know when I started with Road Rage, when I was driving in Japan? Before that, I had Road Rage, but I did not swear. But when I came back, huh, I did swear a lot. You know, I got last year when I ordered food from that one chain restaurant. Um, they gave me a calendar for this year, and every month I get a little, um, coupon. Which is kinda awesome! Damn Japan, what did you... I don't know, they... Um, I don't wanna be rude, but Japanese people are not very good drivers. That's what happened over there. They are very chill, they are really nice, but they're not very good drivers, in my opinion. Okay, that's my opinion. I'm not saying all of them are bad, all of them are shit, but the majority. They, their driving lessons are on gated grounds, like, they have... They have a specific place where they learn driving. Do you know how you learn driving in Germany? They put the teacher next to you and put you on the streets, on the real streets. So... Yeah, yes, and I don't wanna experience that, to be honest. The worst drivers are supposed to be Italians. So I'm scared to drive in Italy. Indonesia. Alright, isn't Indonesia one of those countries with a lot of little, um, what is it called? Scooters? I'm so scared. Look, I don't wanna say this thing, but people say we're not better. Actually... Actually, if you look at the statistics... We are way safer drivers than men. Just, just check, just check out the statistics. Motorways. Don't forget to drink something! Anyway, a bike can go counts as a road phone. Look, I don't mind saying my real, you know, every... Short names. Wait, I won't say my real name, and every time people say Japan, shorten. I don't get it, I'm sorry. Oh! Your name is JP? Ah, that... Um, yeah, okay, I can, I can understand why you get scared, uh, when someone says this JP instead of Japan. I'm gonna look what kind of coupon I can use. They're usually all for pizza, but I don't like their pizza. I usually order their burgers. So... Yeah. Have to be... By the way, I'm gonna let you guys listen to my music now. Can you hear it? Hope you can hear it. Yes, good. Is it too loud? Is it alright? Please let me know. A bit too loud, okay? Better? Is it better? I hope it's better. Burger pizza and pizza burger, which... There was a thing in Germany, I don't know if it was in other countries, but they were selling a pizza burger, where you had like, 2 burger buns, like, like the top and the bottom, and in between was the pizza, like the, the tomato sauce, the sausage, like the pepperonis and stuff. So... Yeah. But they discontinued, I loved it, it was really good, but they discontinued it. Which is awful, I hate it. The ducks myself was not gonna cause any issues, plus, I basically worked all important stuff. I need to know, can I Google myself? I'm regularly, I'm Googling my, myself, just to be sure. I Google my name... Apparently, apparently, I'm a doctor. Interesting. Interesting, apparently, I'm a doctor when I Google my name! I just Googled my, my real name. I Googled my real name. It's, my real name is not Chocomanju. I was, apparently, I'm a doctor of psycholo- psychology, okay? That's, that's, you have to achieve that. But if you Google my, my Bituba name, there's... Yeah, that's me, that's me. And a lot of food. And a lot of food! Cause my name is food. By the way, Manju, she has a doctor title. I, her name is Dr. Manju. My, uh, I worked for intelligence, so I know how to clean. That's not bad. Okay, but... If I was smart enough for, um... For a medical university degree, I would have gone with psychology. I would have gone with it, but... I'm not smart enough. I'm very far from being able to study anything... Medical. Oh, hi Comet, welcome in! How are you doing? I gotta, oh yeah, I'm, but, but, wait, we could do this. Gonna... Make the glass disappear, and there I am! So how are you doing, Comet? Where was I in chat? Hope you're doing good! I was in the AM, but got declared medically unfit. Is that good or is that bad? Damn, we're as a high-profile person, we have... Yes, apparently, a VIP, a very, very important person. I'm glad to hear you're out there. I am free! Guys, I am free! Look, I can move all, I could move before, but I can move now without the gla- glass around me. Yeah, I do not, but I can buy it. Can I? How much is it? Give, give me a second. Oh, I can buy that! It's not too expensive. I have, I'm bringing it. Oh no, hope you're doing better soon. Nobody can do Choco, I... It's not on sale anymore. I think I missed the sale. It's 10 bucks, so it's not too bad, I think. I'm not... Sorry, but I'm not good with collabs. I was, I did a collapse, I wanna do more collabs, to be honest, I love it. But I was so shy and weird on my debut where I had a collapse. So yeah, let me see if I can find... A good coupon for tonight. If I can, I can add you to the list. That would be so cool. That would be so cool! That would be so cool! You do still need to deserve a gift of community. Yes, we still need that! Give me a, we don't have, we don't have cookies, Taro! I ate them all! I'm a serial lurker, I'm here... Wait, really? Yeah, I had to collapse on my debut, you know, you, you were, I think you were there. By the way, the, um, the post, the New Year's post, you know which one I'm talking about? We had the goal in my debut zone, it was the last goal we could have reached, it's one of my stretch goals. Uh, but we did not reach it. Um... Some, someone, some people thought it was because of that, but no. It just felt like it. Just felt like it. Hmm, I'm not gonna make any more cookies, you have to wait until probably November. Okay? You were there, yes, I know you were everywhere. I know you were there. Only the, me too, and it's not good. There are no good, no good coupons, why are there no burger coupons? Like, there was one for their chicken nuggets, but I do not feel like chicken nuggets. Yeah, they are mostly pizza stuff and, and Italian, it's an Italian chain restaurant. But yeah. It's fucking annoying. When we, I don't know when we have the community gaming, I have to concentrate on my bachelor degree first. I have only 3 months left, and if I do not finish in those 3 months, you guys have to pay for my daily expenses. Okay? So we better get re- uh, get, get, get it done within the 3 months, because I don't think you guys can support, can support my daily expenses. What is sassy, huh? Wha- 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 what is sassy? What is sassy? Look, there is time till Wednesday, if you wanna join. Okay, I'm, I'm...
Hydrate up, bitch!
Oh, we're gonna hydrate.
Gimme, gimme!
Oh, Manju, you get a treat! Oh, Manju, you get a treat. Let me just throw it to her. Here you go. Oh, let me throw another one. Here you go. We're gonna throw another one because I she's laying on the couch right next to me. I missed twice already. Here you go. Oh my gosh, I finally, I did it, I did. E-kitten era. What do you mean e-kitten era? Why is there no kiss? Uh, because I don't wanna get up every time uh, someone redeems the kisses. The kisses have been gone for at least two months already. Eh, and if the mystery person accepts, I think. That's so true. That is so fucking true. Shrimp, that's absolutely true. They are true. You like the art? You like it? Ah? Ah? It's not tracking my eyebrows. I'm I'm doing the eyebrow bounce, but but it's not tracking. I know, but he, and you, no, you, Manju doesn't get, Manju get a lot of kissy, she gonna get an extra treat, okay? She gets a lot of kisses at night. Because she's like, she's sleeping in my face, so. It was between her and the That would have been insane. That would have been insane. Holy fuck. Wait, you already? You already You already emailed Mouse? I would have, I said over. Can you, can you send me a list of all the, all the uh, VTubers you asked? Because I'm kinda curious now who else you asked, because holy fuck. It it it's not tracking my eyes correctly, but that's insane. Oh shit, I have to order my food or else or else they close. That would be Phew. Where do you get the 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 courage from? I would be so scared. I know it's ridiculous, but I would be so fucking scared. That's Wow. I'm not even noticing that I'm cursing, to be honest. I'm not even noticing the cursing. Okay, I'm gonna get a mango sorbet as a dessert. No one can stop me. No one can fucking stop me. It's the stuff I need to do as manager, I can't afford to be skinny. That's so true. I mean, it's just Okay, I have to say, I only know two of them. I only know two of them. But the the one you put fourth on the list, I've heard that name before. Shrimp, please be my manager as well. I love you already. A mango sorbet, you know, frozen fruit and then pureed, it's, oh my gosh, it's so good. I tried the strawberry one last time and it's disgusting, but mango, shit, that's good. She is my British comfort shrimp. Oh! Yeah, I'm definitely being part of that fucking collab. I wa- I wanna be part of the collab and please be my manager as well, but but put Gio first because but because she's your first client and I don't wanna take it from her. Imagine a slushy book more solid, it's, yes, that thing, it's so good. And I'm gonna get that, I'm not gonna say that, cuz it sounds, it sounds weird. Gonna get that as a dessert as well. What's going on? Since when is it like? Something's going on, I don't like it. Since when do we have the minimum at nineteen ninety again? Let's first get me my burger. Look, Choco, Shrimp can teach me what, me the ways I can I think you should finish school first, Taro. She's not close to my heart. She's, she is. She is this, I love Gio. She's, she's one of my bestest VTuber friends. My, but she probably is my bestest online friend who I've never met before, like IRL. All the other Pegasus C and Panda I know real life. I mean, they were here not too long ago. But yeah, Gio is my bestest online friend. Sorbet, sorbets are pretty easy to make frozen fruit. Exactly. But I think they don't put syrup in it, in this one, because it it can be quite sour at times. All of people beer. She can be sweet and we Good, good. I, Shrimp, you are now officially my manager. I just hired you. I just hired you. But yeah, please put Gio first. Gio is very important. She's already, well, how many followers does she have? She has a lot, a lot. She needs, but she needs even more. Babe, what burger should I get? Three for five, that's so good, I need more. When I'm done, with what? When we're done with what? They do have a crispy chicken, a cheesy chicken, a classic burger. I'm not gonna say the name because that might dog me. I'm not gonna say, because this chain is only in one part of Germany. If he's, oh, yeah. You can, you can, you can start managing me right now. But it's slow. It will take, it will take a while until I'm done with my thesis. Um, I hate it. I'm not eating a veggie burger. That's disgusting. I'm not eating a veggie burger. I'm, I'm a tiger. They also have the fresh bacon, the smoker, the Burning Man, but I don't wanna eat the Burning Man because it's too spicy for me. It's not too spicy, but it's it's at that border where I'm like, hmm, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, hmm. And they got a classic cheeseburger, a burger boss, a bacon beast and the green burger, but we're not gonna take the, get the green burger because that's vegetarian. How long are they open? Okay, okay, I'm safe, I'm still safe. We have to hurry, I have to hur- I have to hurry. Um, I wa- I'm probably going with the fresh bacon. Or do I take the classic? But I like the bacon. We're gonna, we're gonna take the fresh bacon. Because they have bacon. Very important. Do I put extra? No. But I wanna, I want the coleslaw. I really like the coleslaw. They have a good one. They cheesecake, yes. I'm patient, trust me, I'm all, always on the thinking. Aw, that's, that's the total opposite of me because I'm not patient. Oh, by the way, I have to probably give me a second. Where, where's there it is? Hmm, it's a cheesy, pretty disgusting. Oh, you want me to suffer? I will remember that, Arthur. I'm gonna remember that. I've got the bacon, veggie burgers can be, not, not here. I I tried it because my sister is vegetarian. I tried the burger, the veggie burger, it's I wouldn't even call it a burger. Bacon's laugh, yes. Taro, you remember what I studied for now? Yeah, what did you study? Online stuff and, oh, did you, oh, that explains why you're online so much. Let's see what else. Yes, they have my garlic bread deluxe again. Oh my gosh, last time it was sold out and it's like it's so fucking good. I'm gonna go with the garlic dip as well. Their garlic bread deluxe is with, is with bacon cheese, chil- chili cheese. And and onions and stuff, it's so good. I love it. Oh, you started to be a chef? Wow. That, that's, that's actually amazing. Had to wear veggie burger as I was eating my steak. Don't worry, we did not order the veggie burger. Cooking, now I remember, yeah. Get big for, I got, I got a lot of bacon on it, but it's all mine, I'm not sharing. Funny you were leaving. I'm not a big fan of seafood, Shrimpy. I'm not, so don't worry, I'm not gonna eat you. Not a big fan of shrooms. Nobody is eating Shrimpy. Nobody is eating him. I, I'm sorry, are you pronouncing he/him? I I just used it, I'm I'm not sure. I'm sorry, if I, if I use the wrong ones. Still got room for something. Do not eat shrimp. I will forbid it. Yeah, I'm, okay, good. I'm sorry if, I'm, I just assumed without asking, I'm sorry, but yeah, apparently I assumed correctly. Okay, let's go to the what's it called? Address. We're gonna, we're gonna pay with PayPal. We read the thingy, what's it? No, it is, you never know. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm still in the habit of assuming and that's not good, so I try to be- better myself. Guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna order my food now. You can my end thing. I've been called baby Oh, don't worry, I'm not gonna call you baby girl, but you're gonna be Shrimpy. You're gonna be Shrimpy. Are you okay? Oh, hi. Guys, I'm sorry. Oh, Manju, you get a treat. Oh shit, I dropped it again. She's sitting right next to me and I dropped the fucking treat on her face. Here you go. I have to, I have to accept on PayPal first. I gave her the treat and she got another one right next to her because I dropped it. It's fat because of Don't worry. Manju is not getting fat. I'm taking good care of my baby girl. Yeah. She's probably thinking, what the fuck is wrong with you, human? Why the fuck are you like this? But yeah, she has to deal with me twenty-four seven. Twenty-four seven. She has to deal with me and my bullshit, which is a lot. Come, I hope you're ranked. I don't know what that means, but it sounds like an insult. I'm not playing any shooters, so I'm not good. Lower is amateur, but I'm far from. Oh, that's, that's not bad, that's not bad. I'm five-ten, five-eleven, I'm not sure. I'm one seventy-eight. That's what I am. Hi, baby. Hi, baby. Ah, ah. No. Coming through hell to get diamond. Well. I paid twenty-two seventy, I think. Now my available money went down to one thirty-five dol- uh, euros. I was gonna say dollars, but I'm not paying in dollars. Yeah. What are your plans for tonight, guys? I'm not sure what time zone you guys are in. I know Arthur's probably gonna go to bed soon. I'm not sure. But it's probably very late for you. Like our, hmm. To measure rank, win one. I'm one hour ahead of you. Oh. Okay. So you're, you're pretty close in time. I know Arthur lives in the future. I know that. I know Taro lives in the past. But I'm not sure how much. I think Taro doesn't live too much in the past, but Arthur lives a lot in the future. Tomorrow is school. I hope you're getting good grades. Because if not, I'm gonna block you. You're gonna get a timeout from your auntie Pegasus C. You hear that? I love this like you can't Don't you live like Portugal or something, Taro? I thought you live, lived somewhere Portugal. No, what? I'm sorry, I might Uh, you are Portuguese. You see? That's why I thought you would live in Portugal. And that's not next to Germany. That's very far from Germany. And you, what's the, I have to Google that. I'm very bad with that. And ta- yeah, Arthur's gonna, gonna sleep soon. I'm gonna be okay, guys. If you, if you're not sure if oh, that's the di- oh, that's the Digimon thingy. Uh, the Pokemon thingy. How did I not know? You guys, if you're so worried about me, you can, you can always send something on Ko-fi. But you do not need to. I can make that money stretch a lot. You live in Luxembourg. Oh, Luxembourg. Oh, yeah, okay, 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 okay. In Portugal, I thought it was America. I don't know. I don't know, to be honest. Recently, I recorded a so- not a song, but Recently, I recorded a so- not a song, but I, I was... Trying out how it is to record a song. I'm not sure if I should ever... If I should ever sing again. It was, um, something. Oh no, I did not mean to press that button. Taulo's a Pokemon, and the new version, yeah. I have preferred on Discord. I saw, I saw during the Christmas season... Taulo had a little Santa hat on his, um... On his profile picture, it was so cute, I like that, that was awesome. Taulo, are you gonna get bunny ears for Easter? Are you gonna get bunny ears for Easter? I like that. Yeah, he gave me one. I have to, I... I have to get some Easter artworks done. Doing a cover most, much people do it in a closet, even... I cannot, I cannot do it in the closet. Because the cable is not long enough to reach. But I'm, I'm more concerned about my voice, to be honest. It was, it was... It was something. I was doing it in a server, put everyone... You have to do that for my server as well. You have to take our profile pictures and put the Santa hat on it. Oh no, you cannot, you cannot do it for me, because... I don't know where the picture is. The picture, you see my profile picture? In, in Discord? I will never change it, it's my dog, that's Choco. But I do not know where the picture went on which, on which USB stick server thingy. And I cannot take another picture of her because she died a few years ago. It would be, I, I never... Yeah, that's why, that's why. I'm too scared to lose the picture. Yeah, trying to find a genre that fits your voice as hell. It is. What do you guys think fits? Like, what do you guys think my voice should be used for, like? Suggest a song, suggest a song, I'm gonna listen to it after stream and gonna check it out. It has to be easy, though. Heavy metal. I do not, I cannot record heavy metal. My neighbors will kill me. They're gonna kill me. Cause that's another thing I have to, I have to think about. My neighbors can hear everything. Can we get the recording, though? I'm not sure, it's really bad, I, I... Like rock, I wanna sing like rock stuff, but my voice is... There are also high-pitched... Rock songs, German rap, I would... I will be, I will be dead before you get me to sing or rap. German rap. It's... It's the worst drama, German rap is, there's... Like, a few artists, I, I would say, okay, but that's it. But that's it. I used to sing metal in school. Till I injured my, oh no! Then give creep, creep raid your head, is that, is that a song? Um, no. Do you know the filter on TikTok where you have to be like, "Doremi", and so, eh, and so on? To get the ball through the little holes? It's kinda, it's kinda fun, I never tried it, but I like watching the people... Do it and then fail. Put on your server that can show you. What do you mean? Your friends who listen to German rap, but it ain't... It's, it's, it's alright, comment, it's not for... It's not for most people. My mom's boyfriend loves lis- listening to it, and... Yeah, it's, it's fancy, okay, wait, I have to, I have to creep raid your head, where do I, I have to write it down. Or else I will forget it. Where was I? I don't know what he means. Is it this one? I ordered my food, I ordered it, don't worry. There's, it, it will be here in 32 minutes. They're currently cooking it. I, I do, I do forget a lot of things. Can't think of anything that took my time. You follow me on Twitter? Really? I'm always, always amazed if, when people follow me on Twitter, to be honest. It sounds like, um, the music my mom would listen to. Sorry. It sounds like the music my mom would listen to. Once I listen to a pretty high energy. Can't even, I'm playing Minecraft, sent you a voofer. You sent me a voofer on Twitter, what? Wait, let me just... You sent me a voofer? How do you send a voofer? Oh, did you? Did you send me a message? I fucking played one, yeah. Yeah, my DMs are... I see you. I'm gonna accept you, because my DMs, I'm not gonna check it. I'm usually not gonna check it, because I'm getting flooded... With, um, the sex bots. It's, it's insane. It's like, hot woman, sexy lingerie, video chat. No, thank you. No, thank you. So I'm usually not checking my DMs. Always voofer. I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'm gonna voofer back. But I usually, I want sexy much. Me too, me too, but it does not look right on me. Looks really weird. I got this one bunny suit. And it kinda looked weird on me. I wish it looked not that weird. As every time I read a amateur, therefore, a voofer. Also, I got another, like, the, the thingy, uh, someone gifted to me. The black onesie, it, it's, it's still, it's not fitting right. Like, the size is perfect, but I do not have enough ass. I do not have enough ass for it. Yeah, I have a pre- yeah, I have pretty big body issues, to be honest. I was trying with those outfits to, to feel more comfortable in my skin, because it's pretty revealing. Oh my gosh, um, MR is Marvel Rivals, I was, I was wondering the whole time what the fuck you guys are talking about. Uh, so yeah. I have, it's not, it's not the, the typical bunny suit, it's, you can also, I think you can also see it on my throne. I got it on throne. Think I got it on throne. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, the, the gray one. And the Eevee one I didn't get, by the way. I didn't get it. Because there was, there was some issues, and then... Why are you doing countdown? No, I got it a, a while ago, it's, it takes, it takes really long... For throne gifts to arrive, to be honest, it, it takes, it takes a moment. Except the, the Amazon links, because I put them in there myself. Those arrive pretty quick. But other things take... A while. No, I have ca- yeah, I don't, I don't have enough cake, and I don't think workout will help. Hmm, I, I'm come from a family of no cake. We have a little bit of cake, but not enough. Yeah, some, some type of that, it, I think like... If I put myself in those outfits, I have to look at me... Because usually I'm covered head to toe in cozy things. But I'm, I'm underweight. I'm underweight. And my bones stick out. And, yeah. It's not easy for me. Because people stare. I'm tall, I'm super, super skinny... And people stare. Oh, also, my skin is... My skin is white, white as paper because I don't go outside. So I, if I step in the sun... I'm glowing. But if I do squats, I have to move. You know? I wish I had a 3D model so we all could do some workout together. Wish I had less kick on, give me your cake, give it to me. What do you mean the cosplay for the thingy? I took pictures in the, these outfits, but they look... Pretty ugly. As a guy, it feels weird having a bigger ass. Give it to me, give me your cake, give it to me. Give me your cake. Got a lot of cake in the fridge. Sounds usually wild, yes, but I'm white, white. I do not... When I, when I... It was right before the pandemic hit, I was working for DHL. Delivering the mail to people. In the burning sun. I was... You wouldn't have, like, I was dark. I turn, like, if I go in the sun and get a little color, I get a lot of color. I get a lot of color. Can you show them? I'm not gonna show you. I got one picture I might show you guys eventually. Because I think that picture turned out alright. I might show it eventually. So, I don't know. It depends, usually I get red first, and if the red disappears, over time it turns into brown. If you owned my... Because... Because, um, I felt like it. I'm gonna take it down eventually again. I only own long pants, I have short pants as well. They, but they're usually reserved for really hot summer days, or if I sleep at another person's place. Because I usually don't wear pants while I sleep. But if I sleep at my friend's house, I'm gonna wear pants. Because I don't wanna be rude. Why does it take so long? I'm hungry! Bring me my food! Bring me my food! I need surgery for, oh no, what's wrong? Why you need surgery? It's okay, Manju, it's okay. Keep on sleeping. Keep on sleeping, baby. My friends are only when I go outside, to be honest. I'm wearing long pants almost every day, even in summer. Because my legs are the widest of me. They are bright. I'm gon- I'm gon- if... Okay, guys, remind me next summer, if it's sunny outside, I'm gonna take a picture of my, of my, my legs. You will see... The glow. You will see it! Or you don't sleep naked with your friends? I do not sleep naked with my friends, don't worry, it's, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna... If I sleep outside of my own home, I'm gonna wear pajamas. Currently, I'm just wearing t-shirts that are really big. Don't like being exposed. You posted feet with shrimp. I did, no, I, I did not post it while I was streaming, I scheduled it, Twitter post- posted it for me. Kidney day. Oh no! Oret! Shrimpy! That's insane! Okay, even though my model is smiling, I'm not smiling right now. It's not good at tracking, to be honest. That's insane! Hope you, hope you, I hope you, you're gonna be okay. Twitter, Twitter can do this, you can, you can schedule posts, which I did. Which I did. It's okay, I'm trying to assemble some stuff, then I'm gonna take a week break from it. Yeah, take... Just a week? Uh, you should probably take a little bit more than a week. Just saying. A week is probably not enough. Take, take all the time you need to be he- healthy again. That's, that's insane. Exactly, no one will rush you. If you rush yourself, you're gonna, gonna get hurt or something, or, or not get healthy again. Take all the time you need. Ah, my nose is itchy. Ah, my nose is itchy. I'm gonna tell you one thing of me. I'm out for a Philippines stream, which starts at nine AM my time. That's when I sleep. I've been modding for them for almost a year and a half, not misses. I can tell you, you will not get me out of my bed before twelve PM. On days I don't have to do anything, which is usually every day. Guava or coconut juice if you can help with recovery for myself. Oh, that's actually pretty good advice, author. I need to, I need to remember that. Too much Chinese thing. Yeah, that's, that's. Are you sure? I, I would never get up early just to, to watch a stream. Sorry for two, you guys. Wait, really? That's insane. Why is it not skipping the fucking song? When I press the button, you have to skip. What? How? Yeah, what time do you go to sleep that you can wake up at five AM? Excuse me, what? Five hours of sleep and you're. You. Look at my model. Look at my ears! We have to fix that with a new rig. You five hours of sleep, that's insane. I need the double amount of that. This shouldn't matter to me. And then you have me on the other side, who goes, um, to bed at like two AM, three AM. And wakes up at like one PM. I work on six program, is I like napping sometime. Oh, naps are important. Do I still, I think I have still some tea left. Let's get some. By the time I'm modding German, she always sleeps. It's act- it's not, it's not a German thing, but who are you modding for, by the way? Who are you, who's the German, uh, who, who you're modding for? Uh, but I don't think it's a German thing. It's, I would say. It depends on your life circumstances. Because if I would have to get up early and go to work, I would go to bed way earlier. But I don't have a job. I lost it in August. So, I'm jobless. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that. So waiting for food to arrive, then, yes. I think I know her. Her model's pretty. Oh, there's a pretty model. Cute, cute. Actually, how many people are you in charge of? Yeah, then, yeah, modding and managing. Both, we wanna know both. Currently, seven. Seven modding or seven managing? And how do you find the time for that? How do you find the time for that? I'm not modding for any, oh, I'm modding for Pegasus C. Oh, I'm a mod for Pegasus C. I'm in all of her streams. Twenty seven managing is two. How do you find the time for that? What is your job? What's your job? How, how do you, how, how? It's insane. That's insane. That's insane. I have barely time for myself and you are modding for eight people soon. Oh, that, that's. Okay, working from home is, uh, if I would be working from home, I would probably. Be, um. Be modding for a few people too. And if I'm modding too, I'm gonna be very busy. I know who the, the her. Who is the her? Who is the? You can multitask. Like I said, I'm watching anime now, watching, talking here. If I watch a show, like an anime or something. Oh, thank you, Angry Cam. Welcome in. How are you? How are your days? Good. Welcome in, you're now a tiger star. Can we chat? I, if I watch something. If I watch something. I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch it and I cannot do other thing, like. I cannot watch another thing, you know? They're saying in around ten minutes, my food will be here, but they're still in the cooking stage. They're still cooking my food. How will you get the food delivered in ten minutes? That place is more than ten minutes away. Doesn't make sense. I know, I think I know who you guys, guys are talking about. I like her. I have never watched one of her streams, but I like her. I like her anyway. I like her design, if, if we're talking about the same one. Yes, I know her. I love her model. It's a really pretty one. Guitarist. Food being cooked and delivered mobile. It sho- like, it shows, um, they have four stages in the delivery process. Oh, no! Bye bye, bye bye, comment. See you next time. Um, they have, they have like the little, on their website, when you del- when you order food, it shows, uh, around the, the minutes left. Okay? And on top of that, you see the stage. Oh, I just refreshed the page. I, I thought they were gonna deliver it. Right now, there is a little pot with, um, a spoon stirring it, so cooking food. And like, the first step, we receive your order, and then there's like little post-its getting sticked on here. And the, we're gonna, we're currently making your food. That's when the pot is. And the, 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 the food is on its way, then they show a little, uh, little. Bike, uh, delivery person. It's really cute. It's really cute. They have to be correct. They are always correct. The food, I don't know if food trucks do delivery. I don't know. Six minutes. Where's my food? I'm hungry. Oh, oh, big stretch. Oh, big stretch. By the way, guys, I got new socks for Christmas. I got fuzzy socks that look like cat paws. They're so adorable. I love them. I like socks, yes. Let me show you guys. I'm gonna. Gonna look it up real quick. I love socks as well. I have so many socks, it's insane. Let's, let me see where the ones, where are the ones I got? I put them in the showroom. Those are my socks. I'm currently wearing the gray one. I love them. I love them very, very much. You guys like feet? I never, I never understood it. I never understood why people like feet. I don't wanna listen to that either. Coffee making bring up. Animation angle shot from inside food truck phone rings. Yes. Get in a while. Okay, see you soon, Shrimpy. Oh, God, I got, I got before I even ate something. Three minutes. Do you think they will get here in three minutes? I wish, I wish it works like this. It would be awesome. It would be awesome. I wish I could get money. But I don't wanna be unfair. What now? What now, what? I want my food. I'm getting hungry. Two minutes. Two minutes. They're saying you never know. Oh, I already forgot what I was talking about. That's, that's another thing. I forget, I forget pretty easily what I was talking about. Because, um, I'm the most forgetful person you will ever know. Oh, that. Like I said, I, I, like, I say things and I, two minutes later, I forgot already. I usually forget it so quick. Organize something for you, more for you. You never know, they. Where is my food? I don't wanna end stream before my food is here, because I know for a fact. I know for a fucking fact that the second I raid. And I'm go- and I wanna say hi to, to whoever I raided. The second I, I raid, my, my doors ring, my doorbell is ringing. Like, I know it. I choose ten minute and. Yeah, I, she, she was late a lot. She has to put it in her log that she lost her watch or something, that she doesn't have a clock or anything. I guess, like, we're gonna put another video, but not sure if. Depends on how close you are. No, it's not the German version. It's not the German version of that song. It's a parody. Um, there is this YouTuber Julian Bam, who makes, he's telling a story. And during that story, it's like kind of a musical. But it's not, they're taking beans, they're eating beans, and the beans make them sing. A song, a specific song from a specific artist. And then, it, but it's. And then, it, but it's... Changed, they changed the lyrics so it fits the story. That's what the, these songs are. I love that. It's her pretty, yeah, her PC is... Pretty broken, right? I hope, I hope she gets a new one soon. Didn't, I think she got new parts for Christmas or something. I still need to finish my shopping list, I just noticed. You don't, I, I know what she got for Christmas. I know what she got for Christmas. It's more of a work content, I mostly also can't grab, but recently you decide... I consider that they're jumping deep end. Um, not, not necessarily. Sometimes... Sex sells. You see with my feed? The second you post something that is not... Safe for work, you, you get, usually you get more clicks. So, yeah. Like my feed? They already got me 16 new followers. So... I mean... Or they only... But... It could be that they, uh, waited... To be an adult to... Uh, post things like that. You, you can, you should probably ask them. Just, just ask. The, the worst thing that could happen is that they don't answer. I know it's not, not, not good either, but it's better than nothing. They've got kids out of... Oh! Well... Uh, I don't know. I'm gonna put it on. Yeah, that's true, I saw some old clips of her. I saw some old clips of her, it's... It's 2 different persons in my opinion, which is not bad, I like both versions of her, to be honest. But, it's, it's big difference. And I, I, I know that you... I mean, she, she's not, she, she's definitely 18 plus content. You know? But it fits her. It fits her. I like it. I, I would try it too, but I, I don't feel too comfortable. It's just an odd fossil worrying, but... I mean, it's okay to worry. It's okay to worry, but you have to trust that they know what they're doing. Sometimes it's better to trust and worry to yourself than to, to be overbearing, you know? I'm worried about a lot of things, but I'm too scared to even ask people if everything's okay. Yeah, we are at 0 minutes, my food is still on here. Can you believe that? Can you believe that? But, to be fair, it's Sunday. It's Sunday, so a lot of people probably order. I've also reparted and bought more than 20 plus models in the 2 years. How do you even afford 20 plus models? How? Is that all I said, to people offer social experiment and see if it works, like, for you have, oh... One note stream and see... The thing is, I don't, I don't even know how to act looD. How do I even act looD? I don't know. Food is for free then, I don't think so. Julia Queen does not even have that much mo- That's true. I can't... I cannot moan that. I don't know. It, 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 it is really difficult for me to be looD. I'm more cozy than looD. Oh, hi! What's that, what was a moan? Are you okay, baby? Yeah? Oh, hi! You know, that's it. There are other ways of being looD. That's true. Also, that's true. Are you on a tree? Here you go. That's for you, baby. Everything for my baby. Everything for my baby. You can like, someone go po- Ah, stop! You okay? Okay, just answer. Exactly. It's exactly. That's a way to end stream, like... We started studying. And that's how it ended. How did, how do we do that? Luminous does not mean showing skin or tell people. Let me, let me Google that real quick. How to be a looD streamer? The first video that, the first thing that I see is, what is a lootuber and how can I become one? It's a YouTube tutorial. I'm unfortunately very looD, she never streams with clothes on. I'm the total opposite, I put on a lot of clothes. A lot, a lot of clothes. Oh! What? They... Okay, so I got back to the page where they can, where, where I can track my food. And your food will, is, the food is on its way, okay? The food is on its way. Do you, you, you're gonna, you guys... Take a guess... On how long you think it will take to be here. Sure, that's actually true of the people. Uh huh, uh huh. Mm-hmm, okay, mm-hmm. You're all wrong. You're all wrong. Guys, don't forget to drink something, by the way! It's 40 minutes, it's 40 minutes. It's 40 minutes. I wanted to go to bed early today because of my possible appointment tomorrow. For 38 minutes, guys. 38 minutes and I finally get my fucking food. I'm so fucking hungry! You know what I ate today? You wanna know what I ate today? A chocolate bread. You know, the tiny little... Banana chocolat? The little, little tiny breads with little chocolate and that's all I ate today. I'm fucking hungry. People's never said only one. I'm not gonna eat you, don't worry, don't worry. Don't worry! Were you a book? I thought we'll move to Germany, move in with you and cook for you. Well... My son? Tell her don't worry, I'm not gonna eat you. But you know, that's the answer on how I make that little money stretch a whole month? I just don't eat. Hi, baby! I'm sorry, I can't go on. Yeah! Yeah! Aw, Manju is getting hungry too! Cutie, my cute little baby. Manju! It's a tissue! Hey, Manju! We're not standing on the table, okay, baby? I got cat hair in my mouth. We will wait until, yes, we wait until the food comes and then I send you over to, I have to check who else is online, but... Gonna check soon, but I'm sorry, my payments are not... It's alright! They, they, get, 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 what they called? Get healthy soon! Trumpy, you are the best! Maybe I should send you over already, like, right now. Apparently, I got my food! What? Let me, let me, what? I did not get my, I'm pretty sure I did not get my food. I don't even see the car. I think I have to call them. I might have to call them, they're closing in 5 minutes. Uh, let me raid you over to somewhere else really quick. Like, really, really quick. Okay, guys, you know... What to do. And you be nice. Who can, who are we gonna raid? Gonna raid. I, I think we're gonna raid you. Yes. Gonna like, looks, watch someone. Be nice. Behave. I will see you soon. Enjoy the food, I hope I can enjoy, I hope they... Where's my food, I'm... I'm scared. Okay, I will see you soon, bye bye!